Come on.
Come on, Ian. Stay here. Ian, come on.
Come on, Ian. Yeah. Come on. Come on. Let's go. Come on. Come on, Ian. Come on. Come on. Get in here.
James, can you hear me?
Hi, Joy. We can hear you.
Okay, great.
Nice to see you. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely, you too.
So far, it's you, me, and Carl, and we still have a few minutes.
Yes.
Just give a couple more minutes for people to arrive. Okay, we're gonna get this meeting called to order. It is 5:02, and I am calling to order the September 24th meeting of the Manitou Springs Mobility and Parking Board. And I am Chair Corey Sutella. And I see in person here, we've got Carl and Pam on the board. And if we could get the people online. Rolf, I think you're there. Can you please say hello?
Hi, this is Rolf Jacobson.
Got you, Rolf. Joy, are you there?
Yes, I am. This is Joy Porter.
And I think Bill's online.
Yes.
Hi, Bill.
Hi.
Okay, and I don't see Luke online. So I think Luke is absent. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any comments on the agenda or requests to change the agenda?
I have one, Corey. I'm listed as present and absent. And I was at the 27th meeting. So my name should be taken off the absent.
And that's on the minutes, right? So right now, we're doing approval of today's agenda.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself. Apologize.
No problem. Overachieving.
Yeah.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I know.
That's Bill.
Second.
Like Carl, any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved unanimously. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. And I'll give the floor to you, Joy. Can you please repeat your comment?
Yes, I'm listed as present and absent at the same time. And I was present for this 27th.
Yep, I remember that. And I see that Luke is also listed as present and absent.
And I should be listed as absent and present.
You've got you arriving last time at 5:23, Bill.
Okay.
So that's fine, and I think Rolf was absent last time. Is that right, Rolf?
Correct.
Yep, so that's all right. Some other changes I'll propose, if I look at the minutes on the top of each page, it says June 25th, 2025. Can you see that, James?
So I use a template, and I think I may have just used an older version. Let me pull up the...
Go to page two. I don't think it's on page one of the minutes, but on page two.
And three.
Okay, yeah, those are just easy mistakes I can fix. No problem.
Okay, so we'll get those updated. The other thing is, under D, it says we approved August 25, but that was the August 25 meeting, and we were approving July.
I'll correct that as well.
Thank you. And I did want to check, and I'm sorry, I didn't check. We had asked the July minutes to be amended to include the full motion that we had that we had passed. Did that text get updated and not get uploaded okay from the... So that would have been from the... Yeah, that would have been the July minutes. Did those get updated?
So I got it updated. I just need to upload it to the documents. I'm a little behind on that.
Okay. And this is maybe a question. I noticed that all of the references to the people here list the position, like it says Vice Chair Stang, Chair Sutella. Would it be possible for us to include the full name of all the people that presented and spoke at the meeting?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be an easy change.
Great, so that would include City Planner Ringsred, Counselor Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, and Supervisor Kellerman. Are there any other additions or changes to the August minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the August 2025 minutes as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
Does that have a second from Bill?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone opposed to approving the minutes from July 2020, from August 2025? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Next on today's agenda, I got this on my phone here. We have public comment on non-agenda items. I don't see anyone in the audience from the public. Is there anyone online from the public that would like to make public comment?
Looks like there's a couple of folks here. I'll go ahead and allow them to talk.
I see Nate and Vanessa, you've got the floor if you'd like to make a public comment. I think they're on mute. So Nate and Vanessa, if you wanted to make a comment, you could... Oh, there you go, unmuted.
Hi, Corey, it's Nate. Thanks so much. No, no comment from me, just observing. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Anyone else on there, James? Okay, so we'll move on from public comments. We do not have a city council liaison here this time. Natalie let me know that. I let her know about the agenda, and we agreed that she had some other things that that were more pressing for her, so we won't have a city council liaison report. On the topic of the map board presentations, I wanted to give an update on one of our... Do we have all of our board goals listed out? There we go. I spoke with Mr. Crawford, and for goal number one, he agreed that after, within the next two weeks, he will send us a draft of the RFP for the Micro Mobility Master Plan. And so we'll have it on our agenda for next month that we'll be talking about what that RFP looks like. So we should have plenty of time to review the RFP, and hopefully we can finalize that and make a recommendation about that at our next meeting. Under goal number two, collaboration with the Chamber and Pac-Man on citywide bike and walk to work at school. Carl, do you know off the top of your head the date of the bike and walk to school date that we're involved in?
Yes, I just pulled up my calendar. It is Wednesday, October 8th. The middle school. Evan Johnson will be promoting the walk and roll to school. And I know I plan to be there, and would love to see other map board members supporting that event as well.
Yeah, I'm planning to support that event also on October 8th, and that's at 7:30 in the morning at the middle school. So we're looking forward to that, and if there are any other map members that would like to participate, we'd love to have you if you're available. I think maybe just, you know, try to let me and/or Carl know, or just show up. The other thing I wanted to mention on goal number two in collaboration with the Chamber, I did have a chance to talk with the Chamber, and there were two things I wanted to give a little update on. One is the Chamber is looking at updating their parks and trails map and had reached out to Parib, asking for some support with that. I think Parib got in touch with OSAC, and there's some discussion about updating those maps. And we were also invited by the Chamber to provide some feedback on those visitor maps that they're sending out to include, if we wanted to include some mobility and potentially parking concepts on those maps. It makes sense that a map that's going out to visitors would also have, for example, Pike Ride stations, parking lots. I think the parking lots are on there already. So there will be some revisions to that. I will try to get a copy of that map and get it sent out to the entire board, and we'll make sure that everyone's got an opportunity to provide feedback. I've already got a list of comments started on that. The other thing that Jenna from the Chamber mentioned is that next, coming into the spring, I think, they're looking at updating their visitors' guide, and they would appreciate some input from us. What kinds of things would we want to have in a visitors' guide that's gonna sit at some of the hotels and around town? So there will be an upcoming chance for us to collaborate with the Chamber on that, so happy to report, you know, some increasing collaboration with the Chamber. I think, James, I'd made the request that we can invite Jenna to all of our meetings, just so she knows her there, and so she'll be on the regular invite, and we might expect to see the Chamber join us from time to time. The goal number three with the cadence on Mountain Metro, we've kind of closed that out for this year with some success. And on goal number four, we're still, still planning to do that this year, and we'll work with Director Crawford, probably after we get the goal number one, the Mobility Master Plan RFP out there, so just touching in on our goals, looks like we're, you know, we're making some good progress on those and still on track to have completion this year. Are there any other map board presentation items? I'm not aware of any. Hearing none, we'll move on to staff presentations. I had made the proposal, I think the material is in our packet, and James, I had made the proposal that we would, unless there are specific questions about the staff updates, we would just leave those as a an item in the packet. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about sailing through that and getting to some of our, some of our other updates? So the regular updates are in your packet. If you've got any questions now, it'd be a great time to bring them up. Hearing none, I think we do have some staff. Go ahead.
Sorry, I do have a question.
Go ahead, Carl.
So, James, I don't know if you're aware or able to speak to, I saw the Route 36, the monthly comparison, that 2025 was much higher in August than previous years. Do you, is that potentially carryover of people at the Dillon picking up the shuttle?
So that's exactly what it is. We advertise Dillon lot usage for accessing the incline pretty heavily, and we were getting some solid usage. So that would be the, the direct reason why that's seen such a spike in usage. And with that question, there was a, a request for some updates regarding the Dillon lot and the shuttle service. So the, the Mobility and Parking Office construction has been completed. And we're gonna be working on moving in to the new facility here in the next week or two. The public restrooms are also open, though we recently did have some plumbing issues in the public restroom, so those have been temporarily closed, but we're hoping to get those back open as soon as possible. The Metro bus service is scheduled to change on September 28th. The number 36 shuttle will go away, and it will not return. The, the 36 in the summertime will be converted to the 33 route. So the Route 33 bus and the Route 3 buses will be the only two buses running in Manitou from this point on. The number 33 will pick up at the Dillon, and that will become the primary pickup and drop-off point for the 33 bus route going forward. And this change was made in conjunction with the, the planned closure of the Hiawatha Gardens parking lot.
So just one comment in general. So to me, it's, it's very interesting. While the numbers weren't huge, to take the 36, they would have had to, if they wanted to go to the incline, they'd have to transfer at Hiawatha or downtown and get on the 33 to head up there, so this shows there's some people that are determined enough to save money, save money in parking, and, you know, navigate our transit system to get to the incline or wherever. So that's actually very promising, that there's people that want to consume that type of mobility, even though it's more challenging, but that's gonna change very soon and be much more easy for them, so hopefully we'll see even much larger numbers once we get the real shuttle in place, so thank you.
And one other update that was requested as well was regarding the the decision to add paid parking at the Shriver parking lot, as well as at Fields Park. The decision-making process behind that was for a couple of reasons. We were already noticing usage at the Shriver Park Lot for purposes other than the park and the, the pool. There'd be days where we'd have a full parking lot, nobody in the park and nobody at the pool, or very few people at the pool. So we did put up signage indicating that the lot was specifically for pool and park usage only. But we've, we've observed that behavior is still continued. There's folks that park there and go downtown. There's folks that park there and go to the incline. And so with the closure of the Hiawatha Gardens and more focus being put on the Dillon Mobility Hub, we're anticipating that folks would seek out free parking options surrounding the Dillon parking lot that's still in close proximity to the shuttle to circumvent paying to park. So to more or less address that, we're adding paid parking at Shriver, as well as a planned validation system for the folks that, that do utilize the, the Pool and Fitness Center, so they would be able to validate their parking at the pool as opposed to going through the normal paid parking process. And then Fields Park, same, same concept. The shuttle does pick up there on Fields, at Fields Park. So this will just allow us to control the, the parking that is along the 100 block of El Paso there.
James, I have a question on the people that use the park, how do they get validated?
So...
Going to point into the pool.
It, it'll be normal paid parking for, for those folks. And the idea is that the, the paid parking will, will promote turnover and more or less deter people from parking there for, for purposes such as the incline and the bar trail, just because it will be inconvenient to park there to catch the shuttle, whereas instead they can park at the Dillon and catch the shuttle where it's intended.
No, I, I understand that, but it's, I had also heard that Fields Park was not going to... No, I, I understand that, but it's, I had also heard that Fields Park was not going to be in the 100 block, was not going to be charged. Um, and that, I'm just curious to understand if someone's using the park with their kids. I don't, I don't know. I just see some problems with parks and charging people with trying to just go into the park. But I'll wait and see.
Can you clarify that on the 100 block? Cause I, I had read the same thing in the paper.
I may be mistaken.
Yeah, I had read, I had seen it because I observed the council meetings each time and pretty sure that Cory, that you're right. They said, because the neighborhood got pretty upset.
Okay. I had not heard that aspect of it. So that is likely correct.
I can answer that for you guys. Um, so they did remove, I'm sorry, Elena Krebs, City Clerk. Um, so council did remove Fields Park and the 100 block from being paid parking.
So those will continue to be free parking. So it sounds like for now, those will be still an option for people to park for free. Carl, you have another que, or you have a question?
So, James, I have a similar follow-up question to, as Joy. So I know of multiple folks in my neighborhood that historically have driven down to Shriver, specifically to use the Creek Walk Trail. And so, I don't, yeah, I guess it's irrelevant whether that's considered park usage or not, because right now that's going to be considered paid parking. Obviously they can use their 50 free hours, you know, so you get a hour a week, most 50 of the year, weeks of the year. Um, or the other option seems is it's probably going to force people to go park on El Paso over by Fields Park to continue to use the Creek Walk Trail. Is that the thinking that went into this?
So that, that will be the case. Um, but, uh, generally the idea behind the paid parking was to control the usage of the parking. Um, so it, in essence, putting that, that system in place, uh, ensures that the parking will be used for the park or the pool and not for purposes like the incline or the bar trail. If we, if we left those areas free, you can bet that they will be filled with people looking to do the incline and people looking to do the bar trail.
But James, I would, I would really want to know numbers on that. You know, if, if 10 people are doing that and then there's 30 park patrons or pool patrons, I feel that that's, you know, the residents of Manitou and people in Crystal Park coming down to go on the creek trial, I think is appropriate too. I, I know we have to control parking and we'll see what's going to happen when Hiawatha is closed. But I really am not thinking that to control the parking, we would then push our residents out. Um, who are used to just driving in and parking and going. And I'm not sure how many people are using it for the incline. I certainly would want to see that, um, before I would support.
And could, could I just, just that, I think, um, I, I appreciate that question, Joy. And I think this, the way things are right now, this decision has been made by council. So, um, we as map board haven't been asked to make an endorsement of this. Um, I think we maybe would like to register, um, just a comment that this would have, we think, you know, my opinion, this would be a great thing to, to talk about and have a, a chance to discuss and weigh in. Um, maybe it.
Cory, that's good.
In, in this case, there was, there wasn't time and, and the decision's already been made by council. And maybe what we could do is ask for a little bit of, uh, a little bit more staff update on that topic next month, um, to get the, you know, the full picture and, and whatever data is available. But I think at this time, this is an informational item and we're not being asked, um, for an endorsement. Does, does that sound okay, Joy?
That sounds okay, Cory.
Thank you, Carl.
So is just to reiterate what I think I heard you say, you're asking for that to be an agenda item for next month's meeting.
Yeah, my request is that we get a bit more information and, and detail, including any data that's available, um, just for awareness purposes, but understanding that we are not being asked for an endorsement of that change. It's already been made by city council. Okay. Any other updates, James?
Nothing at this time. Great.
All right. Well, I'm very pleased to introduce our special guests, uh, today. Um, the next item is, uh, how to run effective meetings. And, um, so thank you for joining us. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Elena Krebs, City Clerk. And with me I have, um, Kristen, Deputy City Clerk and our court clerk, for those of you who don't, Danielle. So, uh, thank you. So today's session is all about making meetings more effective, um, but also more, um, more easier to participate in. So as we all know, meetings are where, you know, decisions are made and you guys share your ideas. But more importantly, it's where we're able to have an opportunity to build trust with the public. So how they're ran is incredibly important. Um, so this presentation is intended to provide some practical tips on how to effectively organize your meetings, along with tips on making motions, as well as introducing you to the Civic Clerk platform to access your meeting materials in the future. Um, and as you know, when it comes to training, we don't really want to just talk at you guys or give you a packet to read. So this is, does have some role playing. So participation is greatly appreciated. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to Kristen.
Thank you, Elena. This is Kristen Decoy, your Deputy City Clerk. Um, James, can you do me a favor and expand the screen on the projector? Thank you. All right. So like Elena said, um, we did, uh, make this pretty interactive. Um, and we're passing out just some printouts that were included in the packet, um, the motions cheat sheet and, um, just a printout of the agenda that's within the presentation. Um, let's see here. So as we go along, I'll be looking to, to help me with some motions and, um, I'll queue you with questions and invite you to participate with different activities. Um, so if you could just roll with me on that, I would greatly appreciate it. Um, so my first question for you, um, for this effective meetings, making every meeting matter. What do you guys think makes an effective meeting and why is it important? Anybody want to try to answer?
I'll say because our time as volunteers is very valuable and we want to make sure that it's effective and that we're providing the right opportunities for the public and also the right support for staff.
For sure. Great answer. Does anybody else want to add anything to that? Notetakers? Okay. Um, I agree with all that for sure. Um, I could expand on it and say also consistency and transparency. Um, and with that consistency and transparency is going to instill that public confidence. Um, and following good process also reduces, um, risk when it comes to decisions that the board makes. So all of that is true. There's a lot of benefits to effective meetings. Um, with that said, let me see here. So we have our presentation agenda here for you today. We'll be following along, um, through the slides here on this agenda. And, um, with your permission, um, I'd like to be your presentation chair today. Um, so I will say it is September 24th at 5:28 PM and I'm calling this presentation to order. So looking at roll call, um, of course that's essential for establishing, um, quorum and, um, creating a good record. We do want to recommend some formality with roll call. Um, so it's proper to state everyone's name, like I hear you guys have been doing. Um, and then call, call on everyone, kind of like in school, maybe. If you have like a clear view of who's absent, it's absolutely appropriate, like you did, um, Cory, to state who's absent, um, after you've called everyone that is present. Uh, that's a really good way of establishing roll call for the record. Um, this of course is important because, um, it makes it clear to the public. And then also your minute takers may not always be present at the meeting in some cases. Or they might not be able to like remember everything that happened or everyone what, that was present. That's not always visible on recordings. Um, with that said, we also recommend acknowledging when absent members are excused or not excused. Um, this is something that we suggest considering to your SOP, consider adding to your SOP. Uh, because unexcused absences can be grounds for removal by council. It's important that we have that record right for you. And then, um, lastly, we do recommend designating roll call to one individual. That could be your chair. Um, you could decide to delegate that to, uh, staff or secretary as well, if you feel that's appropriate. All right. So jumping to approval of the agenda. Um, we, so the board can approve the agenda, uh, as amended or as presented. And in doing so, the board is agreeing to follow the agenda from top to bottom, um, or in the approved amended order. And of course, as you know, that's done by motion second and majority vote. Um, when amending the agenda, you can remove items or reorder items. However, we do recommend that boards avoid adding items to the agenda because that is of course not going to always comply with open meetings law and giving that notice. So especially if it's a matter that the board's going to vote on, we do recommend avoiding that. Um, let's see here. And then this is where things are going to get a little interesting, where I'm going to ask you to roll with me. Um, before we move on, I'd like to suggest an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to move item E1, motion commotion, before section D, meeting structure. But before we do that, I'd actually like to suggest that we maybe make, go ahead and make a motion that all motions and votes during this presentation are not valid and are for training purposes only. Um, let's see here. Would anybody?
So I will make the motion that for the purposes of this training exercise, all motions that we make and, um, in this role play are not considered official votes of the Mobility and Parking Board.
That will suffice. Does anybody want a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right. Um, and then I'm going to ask everybody in person.
Any objection to that?
Oh, yeah.
Anyone on the board?
No.
We actually do. There was a motion and a second. Hearing no objections, that motion passes. So all votes during this training exercise will not be, uh, official votes of the map board.
Great, thank you. All right. Um, now I do have that suggestion. Um, if you guys would reorder this presentation agenda to put motion commotion after approval of agenda.
I move that we move item E1 up to, uh, following item C.
There you go, I'll call you back.
Did I, I heard a second from Bill, is that right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was answering a phone with my sister, but I'll talk to her later. Thank you.
Thank you. So who, who would like to second the amendment?
I'll second that we, uh, change the agenda.
Thank you all. All right. And, uh, with that, um, let's see here, if I could get a vote of those in person first and then I'll call on everybody online. Um, if you approve the, uh, motion on the, on the floor, please go ahead and vote in person.
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Aye. All right. I've got three in person. And then I'm going to do a bit of a roll call vote for those online. Oh, and I will add that with my, with Elena and Danielle here, um, helping, I'm actually going to count them as board members for this practice. Um, so we will have eight members voting, of course, which is a, a stray from the rules of you guys only can vote with seven. Um, but this is just for practice. So, um, Elena and Danielle, I'm assuming you guys are yes. Thank you. You're good. Thank you. And then, um, going through the list, um, board members, Jacobson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Coroner?
It's Coroner.
Yes.
Oh, I see. Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, motion carries eight to oh. And, uh, note for our minute taker, of course, as a reminder, none of these motions need to be recorded in the minutes because they are not valid during this presentation. All right. Well, we got two motions already done. Thank you. Um, let's see here. With that, we have motion commotion. Um, so thank you for approving that amendment. Otherwise my slides would have been all out of order. Okay. Now that we've gone over the basics, uh, we want to bring things to life and we, like, like we said before, are trying to make this a bit fun for you and also be able to practice motions, uh, discussion and voting. Um, so the rules of the game are that as your presentation chair, I will be calling items and then opening discussion. There'll be different prompts for you to follow along. Uh, then a member will make a motion, another second, we discuss and then vote. And then there will be a clerk that announces the outcome. Uh, I will note that Robert's Rules, which is referenced in our city code, um, is a little bit more formal than this, but this is generally the process that we're going to follow and is sufficient. Okay. So for those of you that have the motion cheat sheet or have been able to see it, I wanted to point out that all the motions on there are listed in our city code. So that's why I wanted to provide that to you as a resource. Um, most of those motions you may never use. More often I expect that, um, our boards and commissions are going to use things like I move to approve or I move that we recommend, which are main motions. Um, you might occasionally move to postpone, which there's a few on that cheat sheet. And, um, you might possibly move to amend, which is a motion that's made before voting on a main motion. And the amendment has to be approved before you vote on the mo, main motion as amended. So, uh, and then the limit on the amendments per Robert's Rules is you can only amend up to two times. So, um, that's just for your information, um, however you want to use that. Um, we're going to be going through some motions that are more realistic and practical. And then some of these are going to be a bit silly. Um, but all of them are an opportunity to practice good process. And let's see here, and then, um, I'll be here to help you along the way. So don't worry about if you mess anything up, just for practice. Can I ask, um, Chair Sotella, how do you guys usually vote?
How do we usually vote?
Yeah, like verbally, visually. Or.
Usually verbally.
Okay, okay. So just, um, whatever you can get clearly. Um, we do, we are recommending with this training for all our boards and commissions that you consider a roll call vote for clarity of the record, especially for those online. Um, because when you all vote at the same time, sometimes with Zoom, it cuts out people. Um, it's just a recommendation for, again, clarity of the record. If you have a really good handle on your roll call and it's clear who is present for hybrid meetings, um, we think it would be acceptable to vote all at once for people in person and then do the roll call for those online. Um, so that's something that we'd like to practice, the roll call voting today. Um, so I do have a list of names and I, I can go through that for the motions that we, we try out. Um, and then I will be looking for volunteers to clerk, uh, when we, um, to play the role of clerk when we do those motions. So they'll announce if it was approved unanimously, um, if it was carried, uh, seven to one, um, and, and announcements like that for clarity of what the outcome was. Uh, if, if you're not sure how to announce that, I can definitely help you. Um, and we will just work our way through it. We are tracking your participation for a little friendly competition. What's your question?
A question. So I think traditionally the chair of this board after votes has summarized the voting, saying, you know, like, uh, passed unanimously or, you know, six to one or whatever. Um, and, you know, such and such abstaining, is that sufficient? Given we typically don't have city clerk representation at the map board?
Absolutely. That is sufficient. So it's a, um, a role that we would expect be taken on by chair or if the chair wants to delegate that again to either a secretary or staff member, which I know James acts as your guys' secretary. Um, so that, that is. which I know James acts as your guys' secretary. Um, so that, that is totally appropriate. If you guys want to, um, we could do a little practice motion and, and um, have Chair Sotella do all of the, um, clerk calls for this practice. Or we could switch it up if anybody wants to just get a feel for what it's like to call those.
I move that we recess for five seconds.
Does anybody wanna second that motion?
I second that.
Okay, alright. And we do have candy for those of you who showed up in person, so thank you. Now, with that said, um, who, who wants to call, before I do the vote, who wants to call the, the clerk? The clerk outcome of the vote, I should say. Anybody wanna try it out? Danielle, do you wanna try it?
I'll clerk.
Okay, great. Oh, yes. Alright, um, let's start with, okay. So how do you vote? I'm gonna go down the list, it's just alphabetical. With our vice chair and Chair Lass is kind of the formality that I have listed here. So, board members, Jacobson?
Aye.
Coroner?
Yes.
Krebs?
Aye.
Owens?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chair Stang?
Yes.
And Chair Sotella?
No.
Alright, Danielle, what's the outcome?
Motion carries seven to one.
Thank you. Alright, so five second break. Take that now, a moment of silence. Thank you, Vice Chair Stang. Okay, um, where do we leave off here? I think we've got motion commotion rolling. So I do have some roles and responsibilities to go over here, so I'm gonna talk at you for just a minute. As you know, your chair runs your board meetings and oversees assigned tasks as needed. Vice Chair fills in for the chair in the absence of, in their absence. Secretary, who may be a board member or staff, is responsible for board's minutes. Regular members are expected to attend all meetings unless excused, participate in discussion and vote on motions. Our alternate members are not required to attend meetings, but may participate in non-quasi judicial due discussions. And they can only vote when filling in for absent regular members through the proper process. So on that note, this is something we do recommend including in your official SOP. And, and, and I'll also say that city code does require in your adopted SOP that you determine how alternates are selected. Especially if there are multiple alternates and maybe a limited amount of spots to fill. And then your staff liaisons, they assist with remote technologies, provide reports and answer questions. And then, um, council liaisons do provide procedural direction to the board and relay the city council's position to the board. They are not required to attend meetings though. Alright. Yeah, oh yeah, question?
Just one other thing I'll clarify about the roles. So on our board, the chair also has the responsibility of working with staff to develop the agenda and set the agenda.
Yes, hundred percent correct.
And on our board, we typically do it with the chair and the vice chair meeting with staff, uh, the week prior to the meeting. But I will note, I don't think we have an SOP document and that's something that we probably need to develop.
Yes, yep, we'll, we'll be touching a bit more on SOP later. Um, but yeah, as as far as our records, you don't have one yet. Um, but that, that's something that I'll go into a bit more detail later here. Alright, um, thank you for pointing out the agenda. I'm not sure how I missed that on this list because that's, of course, one of the number one things you do. Alright, and then under, um, the subject of roles and responsibilities, I'd like to pose a question for motion commotion for you guys. Should the board adopt a mascot? Should it be a golden retriever? And what should the mascot's name be? Does anybody have ideas?
I was thinking possibly Bueller? Could be a good name.
Alright, we have Bueller as an idea.
I move that the board adopts Joy Porter's dog as the map board's mascot. Cause they're always doing cameo appearances during board meetings.
Alright, does anybody wanna second Vice Chair Stang's motion?
I second.
Thank you. Alright, and may I ask, um, Board Member Porter, what's your dog's name?
Fiona.
Fiona, thank you. Alright, and, um, who would like to announce the outcome of the vote before I take it?
I will.
Alright, thank you. Okay, um, Board Members, Jacobson?
Yes.
Coroner?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stang?
Fiona has my support.
And Chair Sotella?
No.
So that motion passes by a vote of seven to one.
Thank you, wonderful. Alright, let's see here.
But I do love your dog.
Alright, um, so, understanding quorum and voting requirements. As we discussed at last training, I believe, a quorum is the minimum number of members that must be present at a board meeting to make the proceedings of that meeting valid. It is also the majority of your board. So a little pop quiz here, uh, you can hold up your, hold up numbers on your fingers if you want, or go ahead and jump in and say what you think the answer is. If you have seven board members, how many do you need for a quorum?
Four.
Yep, thank you. What if you have five?
Three.
Three, awesome. And what if you have three board members?
Two.
Two, perfect. Alright, and then, um, on the matter of voting, um, per Manitou Springs Municipal Code and that, um, little motions cheat sheet that we have, you'll notice that all motions on there are diva, defined to require either a majority or two thirds vote of those present. So if you have only five members present at your meeting, then what, um, is, what do you need for a majority vote? I see fi- five members. Five members, majority vote is three. Thank you. You got it. Okay, does anybody have any questions about that vote of those present? Okay, awesome. Alright, so we do have some-
So what's two thirds of seven?
Two thirds of seven, I have that written down because that is some fun math. Two thirds of seven is gonna require five members. I don't know the exact decimal of what two thirds of seven is, but five members is the magic number. Alright, and then for your code requirements, um, we do have, uh, Manitou Springs Municipal Code on the website. Can I get a thumbs up if anybody has looked at that before? Yeah, I got a couple. Alright, all good. Then, um, I'm gonna just highlight a few of the general, um, parts of the city code relevant to boards and commissions. It does say all boards and commissions shall consist of seven voting members and up to three alternates. During the first board meeting of each calendar year, the board shall elect a chair, vice chair and secretary. Secretary, of course, can be staff. Per Manitou Springs Municipal Code, each board and commission shall provide the opportunity for public comment. It's not really any more specific than that, so we do recommend that you just have that on every regular meeting agenda, just like council does. And then it does say each board shall establish and maintain its own written standard operating procedures. So, like we talked about, about before, um, that is something that we wanna make sure that all of our boards and commissions are going to comply with. So we've requested that all boards and commissions adopt a procedure by the end of the year and submit it to the city clerk's office for filing. We did provide a template to staff liaisons previously, um, with some things for you to consider on that. And then I will also, I'm gonna pull up the city website here. So we can take a look at the code and I will pull up, um, so I'll kinda go over broadly what it looks like for those who haven't seen it, and we'll pull up that specific SOP code so you can see the requirements there. So you just go to the city website, there's the government tab, and you're gonna find municipal code, which is right here. And this platform is called UniCode. Um, it's gonna have ordinances at first that are not yet codified. But on the left, you will see everything that is codified, um, in this menu. There's the city charter, which can only be changed through election. And underneath that, there are all the titles which are your codified city ordinances. So for boards, you fall under title two. And the general boards and commissions are right here under two point oh nine. Scroll down a bit. And then, under rules and procedures is where it has that SOP code. So, again, just requiring you to have SOP, and then it does say, at a minimum, the SOP shall include information on open meetings requirements, which we have, um, included in the template. So that should be met if you follow what's in that template for that piece. Process for selecting which alternate will vote in the event of absence of a regular member. And more than one alternate is present, and training for members, which, um, we, we do provide, of course, this training now for you guys. And you can decide to develop more specific training if you wanted to for your board. So I do have a fun idea with that, a little bit of motion commotion. If you're already required to address training in your SOP, maybe your board could consider adding something like a pop quiz or a scavenger hunt for new, onboarding new members. It's totally optional, if you guys wanted to try to make that into a motion, or you have other ideas for code requirements. Is anybody feeling inspired to do that?
I'll make a motion. Yes. I move that at every meeting, um, there needs to be a scavenger hunt of the code. Do I have a second?
I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. I will go ahead and, um, who, who wants to announce the outcome? Anybody wanna try? Alright, um, Board Member Krebs, Krebs said she'll announce the outcome. Board Members, Jacobson, how do you vote?
Wouldn't we normally, I'm now for some discussion, we've got a motion.
Oh, you're right, thank you.
Yeah.
Right. I am not used to sharing, so thank you, Corey. What, what discussion do, do you all have comments?
Uh, I'll make the comment that I hate scavenger hunts.
Okay, got it.
Is there a limit to the length of comments in between the motion, second and, and the vote?
I would say not officially. Um, our code does reference Robert's rules, which has a lot of specific, um, specificities to it, but, um, I, I don't think it, wait, Elena, can you please explain? You're more accustomed to.
Um, so when it comes to discussion, members of a board are allowed to speak at least two times during a topic. As long as they haven't spoken already about that topic. Um, and it's usually limited to about three minutes. But that's, it's, that's a very formal process.
So can you highlight the difference in discussion before the motion and discussion after the motion? I mean, obviously, the post is probably more very focused on the motion itself, but is there something else that I'm missing? Or is it as formal, the pre discussion as the post discussion, the three minute?
So the three minutes, so the limit is for every part of the discussion, whether or not it is prior to the motion or after the motion. The difference there is you typically, when it comes to Robert's rules, you don't have a discussion before a motion is made. It's usually that the topic is intro- introduced. And then somebody makes a motion to bring it to the table for conversation or discussion, and then, um, it fits second and then you guys have a discussion. The top, the discussion or whoever's talking is limited to three minutes. At that point, that's usually where you guys are hashing out whether or not you have any additional questions, or if you wanna make an amendment. And then it goes from there. Does that make sense?
That definitely makes sense, but just like at council, I've seen presentations and then, oh, hey, are there questions for the presenter? And then it's usually, oh, now is there a motion? And then discussion specific to the motion and finally voting. Am I mischaracterizing that?
Nope, that, um, is the practice. It's an opportunity for some training.
Can I comment on that? I think, so first of all, um, we should make a distinction, and we do in our agendas, between presentation items and action items. So we make it very clear if something's a presentation only or something that we intend to vote on. And the other thing is, I'll back up with what Elena said, the strict interpretation of Robert's rules is, you don't talk about anything that there isn't discussion on anything until there's a second. But it is common practice to have some discussion and then get into a vote in a second, and it's my intention when I'm chairing the meetings to continue to allow that, also to not restrict debate unless I think it's getting out of hand. My approach is, I really want everyone to have a chance to have their say, so my intention is not to limit people to speaking twice unless I see things getting, uh, too out of hand.
Alright, awesome. Yeah, and I have, I've heard that's pretty common for a lot of municipalities to reference Robert's rules in their code and they don't strictly follow it. I mean, it's not always practical at this level.
Yeah, it's a very formal process. It's more for like the general assembly when you have a hundred people that are talking, but we can be a little more informal when it comes to our local government, but it is still there, so it should be practiced to an extent.
Alright, we do have a, um, motion and second on the floor for scavenger hunts at every meeting. Chair Sotella had his comment. Does anybody else wanna comment on that?
I'd like to call the question.
You like to call the question? Alright, um, mind me, call the question.
Uh, in other words, I would like to close debate. I move to close debate.
Gotcha, thank you. Alright, uh, alright, how do you vote? Board Members, Jacobson?
Yes.
Coroner?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Porter?
No.
Smith?
No.
Vice Chair Stang?
No.
Chair Sotella?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries five to three with Board Members Porter, Smith and Vice Chair Stang as the dissenting votes. Alright, I got that right, thank you. It's challenging me on that one. Alright, um, does anybody else have anything, any questions on, or anything to contribute further on code requirements?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Actually, I'm not sure we did that right. I moved to call, I called the question. And if I'm reading this right, I really, we should have had a second and taken a vote on calling the question, and that would require a two thirds vote in order to move to the to the actual voting about whether or not we have a scavenger hunt.
Yes, you're correct.
And actually, that's a new one to me. I didn't know that, I didn't know that you needed a second and a two thirds in order to call the question.
Yeah, cause it's, it's a motion. Elena, are you, you're familiar- Yeah, because it's, it's a motion. Elena, are you familiar with this one specifically? These are in our code, so a lot of them don't get used very often, so if you forgive us for not as familiar.
I'm about eighty-five percent sure that you don't need a second to close. That's only because I'm currently reading Robert's Rules, but I think you don't. So I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, but actually, that's my, my recollection is, when someone calls the question, you don't need a second or a vote.
I think you just, you just take the vote.
So I think you did it right, and the sheet's wrong.
Okay.
So even the two-thirds is wrong?
Yeah, I think there's no vote. When, when someone calls the question, the chair is obliged to to move to the que, to close debate.
Yep, so we'll, so we'll defer to Robert's Rules on that one. Thank you for pointing that out. Alright, oh, one other thing to show you. If you guys haven't seen it before, you do have a specific section of code here for each board. And parking and mobility is 2.24. You have your powers and duties, if you ever wanted to look at those. That kind of outlines what your powers and duties are, of course. Alright, so I will go back to our presentation here. Sure, I didn't miss anything. Okay. Alright, turning discussion into action under item E2. So a few points, I'm gonna go over here. The board does act as a whole. So decisions are made collectively, and that is best done through motions and votes for a more affirmative and formal decision. Individual board members can't speak or act for the board unless the board has formally voted on something. And then why voting matters, it does help because in our minutes, we do summary minutes, and it's gonna show a bit of the important parts of discussion, as well as always, always the motion gets recorded. Furthermore, this helps give staff and council and the public a clearer understanding of what board, the board has decided. And we'll say when to make motions. That is generally described in this first paragraph here. That anytime the board is taking actions such as authorizing expenditures, making a recommendation to city council, adopting a position more formally. If, if the board was going to like publish something with the board's name on it, that'd be something that you'd want to make a motion on. We also might suggest that you consider making motions for members' appointments, if that's something you want to put on the agenda going forward. That way, when the recommendation is sent to council, you can say, the board approved unanimously, you know, that word is so hard, unanimously. So, so that's our recommendation for that. And, and how to decide when to vote. And then, when you're voting, you do want to be complete, actionable, and without ambiguity in your motion. I like to think of motions as questions. Not, not the motion itself, I should say the item. If it's an item that you're gonna vote on, you can kind of think of it as a question, and you're gonna answer maybe who, what, when, where, why, as appropriate. That way, you're kind of considering covering any necessary details. And then, let's see here. And then there are, of course, times where a motion's not needed. If you're just gathering information, brainstorming, if you're gonna take a break, you don't need a motion for that. You don't need a motion to request future agenda items. Of course, you know, we want to use, as a rule of thumb, motions to clarify, decide, enact. Does anybody have any questions about that? Yeah.
Actually, we had a question about, maybe it's on an upcoming slide, but once we decide to take an action, it's, our role is to make recommendations to council. And how we did it was, we said the chair should write a letter to the mayor and ask him to observe that and, and to take our recommendation. But is that the standard way, or is there a approved way of, once we've made a, a motion, a, a passed a motion, that's a recommendation to council? How, how should we process that?
Are you saying like, the board makes a motion of their recommendation, and then as a chair, you like, write, you write the letter? And yeah, I would say that's definitely appropriate. You guys don't have to sit here and, and write the letter together, if, if that's what we're wondering.
Yeah, or I wondered if it's typical that staff would take it, or the council liaison would take it. And where we landed on was, the chair should write the letter to the chair of the city council, which is the mayor.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so you would like, write the recommendation and then give it to staff so that it could be included in their agenda packet, and the council can receive that information altogether. At, like, for a meeting. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, that's not what we did, but
Okay.
we can in future.
Okay, all good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, any other questions? Okay. Alright, I do have a little bit of motion commotion here. This one's gonna be really silly. I want you to think about these questions that I'm about to bring up here. Do we really need a vote for this? And more importantly, why or why not? And then if appropriate, we'll walk through the process of the motion commotion. So for your view, I do have it on screen here. Should the board recommend that council create a dedicated lane for unicorns and rollerbladers on Manatee Avenue to support alternative transit? I'll open this for discussion if anybody has anything.
I would say that should be a, a board action. That should be a vote.
Alright.
I say it's a vote also.
Yes, you guys are correct, because it is a recommendation that we're considering.
Can we clarify, is the lane for the unicorns or people riding unicorns?
Wonderful question. Up for discussion there.
I think it should only be for unicorns that are ridden.
Alright.
I hope your unicorn doesn't rear up.
And if, does anybody want to make a motion pertaining to this item?
I move that we recommend to council that we create a dedicated lane for unicorns only on Manatee Avenue to support alternative transit.
Do we need to amend that, not roller, rollerblades?
No, we, we don't need to amend it, because it's, it's, this is just a, a question posed under, very broadly, which normally we wouldn't recommend, under the item Turning Discussion Into Action. So it's just a question that I brought up, and Elena's made a motion if anybody wants to second, or you can.
I will second the motion as stated.
Okay. Alright. Does anybody have any other, any further discussion?
I'm curious as to why we're not including rollerbladers in the unicorn lane.
It just seems dangerous. I don't know.
Fair enough.
Porn might come out, out of nowhere.
Fair enough. Alright, then I'll go ahead and take a vote. Board Members Jacobson?
Yes.
Corner?
No.
Krebs?
Yes.
Owens?
No.
Porter?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sting?
Yes.
And Chair Satella?
No.
Okay. I forgot to ask some of my new clerks, so I guess I left that on myself. I think I had motion carries five to three. Sound right to everyone? Alright, were my dissenting votes, corner, Owens, and Satella. Thank you. Alright. Wonderful. And then I have another question under the same item. Should the board make a motion to rearrange the chairs in a circle for better vibes? We're almost there.
I move we postpone this matter indefinitely.
I'll second that.
Alright. And who would, any, any further discussion, actually? No. Okay. And who would like to announce the outcome for this vote?
I can do this.
Awesome. Board Members Jacobson?
Yes.
Corner?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sting?
Yes.
And Chair Satella?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful, thank you.
So that means that item has been postponed indefinitely.
Perfect. I will note for you guys, I, I'm glad we got to practice motion. I did mean this to be an example of something that doesn't require a vote. Just because, of course, you don't have to vote to rearrange your, your chairs.
And just taking this a step further, so that is something that we could put into our SOPs. That's the kind of thing that could, could appear in SOPs, how we set up the chairs.
Um, if you want to get that specific, I wouldn't recommend it. You know, you want to maybe be considerate of how specific you are in SOPs or not. But if it's important to the board, then sure.
When we develop our SOPs, should those be approved by vote of the, of the board?
Yes.
Yep.
Adopted, yep. Alright. Well, thank you guys for your participation. Let me jump to our do's and don'ts under item E3. To summarize this, a clear discussion, we do recommend you, you be efficient and concise in your discussion as much as possible, but also keep in mind important context when talking. Sometimes if you reference something from that is not all that clear to somebody who hasn't been attending your meetings regularly, it can be a little bit hard to follow. But that's just, I don't want that to be anything that anybody stresses about. It's just something to keep in mind that you're providing full context, if that makes sense. And then we do recommend using so moved sparingly. Is that something that your board ever uses?
We do.
Okay, yeah. So we, we do just recommend that you keep that for routine items, like approving the agenda or the minutes. And avoid using it for anything that's more complex. And if somebody does use so moved, and you're not clear on what the motion is, that you call for a point of clarification or a point of information, that's the formal Robert Rules term, to get clarification. The point of clarification or point of information are directed to the chair. And it is up to the chair whether or not it's answered right away or later. There's no vote required for that. And we do recommend that you ensure that your minutes are clear and detailed enough to be understood by anybody. And review minutes carefully, even if you weren't present at the meeting. Because under Robert's Rules, you, you are not required to have attended a meeting at which the minutes are being presented for, or being approved for, in order to participate in the approval process. So in summary, approval of the minutes is a confirmation by the body that the written record accurately reflects what occurred, like a collective judgment, not an individual firsthand recollection. Now, of course, if you're not comfortable with doing that, you could still recuse, or if you didn't review the minutes, then you could recuse from voting on approving the minutes. But we wanted to let you know that under Robert's Rules, you can vote to approve the minutes, even if you weren't present. And then if you come across any clerical errors, which are typos, misspellings, incorrect dates, or maybe more one that you'd have to use judgment on, if there's some confusion, you might want to announce that during a meeting. But you can directly email the secretary for those simple corrections. They don't require a vote. Now, if you have corrections related to context, tone, or substantive content, then you go ahead and save that for the meeting so that it could be clarified and corrected then.
Okay, so that's a little evolution. We were, I think the understanding we had was everything that we wanted corrected should be brought up during the meeting, but you're saying we could, we could send those directly to the secretary prior to the meeting?
Yeah, if it's simple clerical errors, like a typo or a misspelling, those are pretty straightforward. Now, it doesn't hurt to bring them up in the meeting, but for effective and efficient meetings, I suppose you, you don't have to bring those up at the meeting if you catch them beforehand.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Let's see here. And then, as far as do's and don'ts, go for motions. I'm gonna bring up another motion commotion for you guys. Let's say somebody made a motion hypothetically, that said, they said, I move that we just be better about not interrupting people and try to stay focused. What's wrong with that motion?
Know who, what, why, and when.
Yeah, good, thank you. So is there a way or some suggestions that you might make to make that more clear and actionable? I can give an example. If you wanted to decide to start making an announcement at the beginning of the meeting to follow decorum and avoid interruptions, or you could put something in your SOP related to the issue. If anybody's interested in that, or another creative solution, you could potentially do a little motion commotion here.
So would it potentially be some, sort of a, a motion of, hey, you know, we request that board members wishing to speak raise their hand and be observed by the chair before speaking, and something along that lines be more appropriate?
Yeah, I would say if, if it's a suggestion like that, it would be appropriate to make a motion to add verbiage like that to your SOP. Yeah. Did you want to make that a motion?
So moved, incorrectly.
Alright, I think that's clear enough, unless anybody has a point of clarification.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, who would like to announce the outcome?
I'll count the votes.
Thank you. Board Members Jacobson?
Yes.
Corner?
Yes.
Krebs?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sting?
Yes.
Chair Satella?
No.
That motion passes seven to one.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to item E4, Toolkit For Success. We have a couple of agenda section headers here, as we would call them. There's consent calendar, which you often see the city council use. I don't know that you'll need to use this very often, but just so that you know what it is, it's a bundle of items that's voted on without discussion as a package. So for example, if you had a batch of minutes, it might be appropriate to do that as a consent calendar. And I think we were even okay with, if it's under a section header, approval of minutes, and you have a whole list to treat it as such. So it, it would, for the chair, they would read everything on the consent calendar, ask anybody who wants to pull anything for discussion. And then, if people pull for discussion, that'll be discussed separately after voting on the consent calendar as a whole. Alright, and then board correspondence, which I see you guys have on your agenda. We do recommend having on all agendas to be able to raise issues or suggest future agenda items. These are just very quick mentions, only not a full discussion. And then we are interest, introducing Civic Clerk Board Portal today. And I was expecting, I did register you all for that, I was expecting I was expecting that to go over differently, but I think some of you were already signed up on the Civic Plus platform. So I don't know, did anybody get any emails, any notifications? By chance, you know? You don't have to look right now. If if we don't know, that's okay. Um. So we we signed you up for the board portal. It's it's a tool for you to use if you want to. It's there. Um, it's for you to access your agendas, packets, and minutes. And then it allows you to either note or annotate in there. Um, so I'm going to share a, uh, quick video on what the capabilities are for that. And then, um, we will stay here for a few minutes after if anybody wants assistance with setting that up um, in person. Otherwise, for those of you that are online, you're welcome to call, email, or stop by our office, um, anytime during normal hours and we can help with that as well. We might need to actually. Maybe that's why. Bear with me one second, I'm gonna try to get sound on this. What is, what does that sound like for you guys? Sound like?
Very faint.
Well, I will go ahead and talk through this. It's because I'm, okay. That's fine. So this is essentially what the portal looks like. Um, it does talk about being able to change your password. I'm not sure that that capability is there to be honest on the, um, on the, uh, computer platform, uh, but I have seen it on the mobile device for you to update your password. Um, and I do recommend using this on a computer because it does look kind of funky on a mobile device, not that you couldn't use it that way. So you can set up notifications as well for when meeting content is published. And then at the bottom, you have the agendas tab. Um, we do not have the join meeting feature. Uh, so we will not be using that particular feature, but you can click on any meeting on here. And it's going to show us what that looks like when you click in, it'll have the layout of the agenda. Let's see here. Okay, skip that. So, uh, you can view the agenda or the packet. And then it's gonna have every item underneath. This is what it will look like when you click on the agenda. Um, you can see in the top left corner, there's the annotation button, which they're gonna demonstrate. This isn't our top recommendation. If you got a chance to look at the board portal cheat sheet that we provided, we do recommend the notes feature over this. If you annotate the agenda or a single agenda item compared to the packet, it doesn't translate over, if you annotate an item, it doesn't translate to that whole packet package. Um, so they they do save them separately when you do this process. But it is a fun feature if you want to get in there and try it out. Um, you do have to save on that one. Okay, and then they are going to show us. Let's see here. So if you click on an item, it shows all the, um, attachments, which you can open individually. I probably could have just, um, opened this myself. Sorry about this, you guys. Um, it does have a recommended action area, um. So we are working on getting those features implemented as well. Let's get that here, I wanna see. Okay, this is what the notes look like. Um, and then you'll see that they do auto save. Um, we think that this is probably the best approach right now, um, to notate individual items. If you have something that you want to remember, this is a good tool for you to be able to prep for the meeting. And then I'm hoping it shows here what it looks like when you then jump ahead. So the note saves in there. Okay, here we are. The notes will show all the meetings that you have notes on. And then you click on it, it pulls out this sidebar, um, which they went through that pretty quickly, but it is clickable for you to go to that agenda item that you have notes on. Um, so again, just a tool optional for you to use if you want. And then we'll go back in. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us anytime. Alright, getting close to the end here, we have item F one ethical expectations, which I think should be pretty straightforward for you. As an advisory board member, you are steward of public trust, trust. Um, so of course, you want your actions to reflect integrity, transparency, transparency, and accountability at all times. Um, you're expected to act in the public's interest, be respectful and fair, maintain transparency, which I know we've covered before lots, and, um, avoid using your position for personal gain. Alright, jumping to item F two recusals. Um, I think we talked about conflict of interest a bit for before. Um, so of course, that's a neat situation where your personal, financial, or professional interests could influence your participation. Um, so if you feel like you cannot be impartial, or if even if there's the perception that the public might see you as, um, impartial, then you might want to consider recusal. Um, and then how to recuse. Um, step one, state your intention to recuse on the record clearly and briefly. Step two, step away from the discussion table or leave the room during the agenda item. So of course, you want to do this as soon as possible and not participate in discussion if you believe you need to recuse yourself. And then, um, again, that's what I had just mentioned. Um, with that said, I have one more motion commotion for you guys. Um, so in this scenario, someone has to recuse themselves due to conflict of interest and you lose your quorum. What can the board do then if they have an item that they're considering to vote on?
Think you have to postpone.
Yep, you can motion to postpone. Alright, um.
Well, in fact, I don't think you need a motion to postpone in that case because you've lost quorum. You can't vote on it.
That's, oh, thank you, Elena. Yep, she's saying that's correct. Thank you, Chair Satella. Alright, so almost done here. We have section G adjourned. Um, how do you guys usually adjourn your meetings? Do you vote? Do you just adjourn as chair?
We've done both.
You've done both? Okay. Um, we'd say either one is acceptable, but we do recommend picking one um, for consistency purposes. Uh, and then, uh,
I think the practice I've landed on is, um, would there be any objection to our adjourning? And if there isn't any, then I say, okay, we're adjourned.
Oh, okay, alright. I think that that works and then, um, as far as the minutes go, I would consider that as the chair adjourning since you don't have like a a motion a second. Yeah, okay, awesome. Um, does anybody have any questions? Nope, alright then, um. Corey, would you like to go ahead and adjourn this presentation for me?
Think you have to.
I have to, okay.
Since you're the chair of this session.
Alright, got it. Um, if there are no objections, then I'll adjourn the presentation. Perfect, adjourned. Thank you guys, uh, for your good sportsmanship. And, um, I will say if anybody here in person wants help, we could stay for a couple minutes with the Civic Clerk Board Portal, or you're welcome to reach out to us anytime. Yeah.
So is that something maybe you could send out with the invitation link? You could send that video link also?
Yeah.
Then everyone would have it.
Yeah.
Great.
So I didn't want to interrupt you in the middle of the video. So can you maybe just step back and talk for a second about what, why we're getting access to the civic portal and what you're expecting us to do with that and how that will benefit staff or the the board? Because I guess I'm a bit unclear.
Yeah, it's a, it's a software that we have and it's it's has more features than we've been using. Um, so we, it's a, it's a tool, it's optional. I wouldn't say you have to use it. But, um, you could access agendas, minutes, and, um, packets on there. Uh, so that that's one option. There are of course other ways to access those materials. Um, but it's it's really just an optional tool for you that we hope would be helpful in meeting preparation. Yeah. Okay, awesome. Well then, thank you for having us.
Thanks for that presentation. Are there any other questions about the presentation?
Thank you. That was informative.
Okay, um, next on our agenda, we don't have any action items, so I think we only have board correspondents left. Um, so we'll start online. Does anyone on the board have, uh, board correspondence or suggestions for future agenda items?
I don't.
About in person? Okay, with that, is there any objection to our adjourning? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned at six thirty-two. Thank you, everyone.